July 18th, meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Spile, please allegiance to the flag.
Let the United States of America, the true mother for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna introduce myself on Bob Adams, vice chairman. This is Jason Quint, to my left, Greg Logan on the end, Zach Karen on my right, and Tim Ryan's on my right. They're all the members. We're gonna have to do a reorganization here before we get started, because this is a time of the year that we do that. So I'm gonna enter. We need a motion for chairman. Do you need to hear a motion? Chair, go ahead.
Sure, Zach, go ahead.
I'll make the motions that we appoint Bob Adams as chairman of the zoning board.
Any second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Here now, a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to do a head count on this?
They do roll count?
It was unanimous.
Yeah, I don't know that you would have to for a reorganization vote, but...
I don't believe so.
Think you're right.
All right, we need to do a motion for vice chairman?
I'll make a motion to appoint Greg Logan, vice chair.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the next one is for clerk.
Chair, I make a motion. That'll be Zach Karen for the clerk position.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
The other part of this, we're gonna discuss afterwards. I'd spoken to you, Tim, about the condominiums control committee, and we're gonna both discuss that later on. Okay, number, I wonder, number two now. This is Dyton Woods. Marguerite's here with it. You've been discussing this with him? Case number 0318.
So I've had some conversations with Mr. Zola with regards to some documentation that we were looking for, recorded copies of certain documents. So those relate to the regulatory agreement. It's actually a First Amendment document that we're trying to confirm if that was ever completed. I do, I had reviewed one at one point in time and sent back final edits. My understanding, and this was back in 2009 or '10, was that it would be forwarded to Mass Housing because they need to sign off onto any changes to the regulatory agreement, and then make its way around for further signatures. So Mr. Zola has indicated he's going to try to reach back out to his counsel, Attorney Matarra, let him know, you know, the timeframe we're talking about, and see if we can find some follow-up status on what happened with that document. And if it is necessary, which I believe it may be because it pertains to when the board increased the number of affordable units, we need to kind of update the documentation to show that there's a greater number of affordable units in the development, and it hasn't been completed, he's gonna take care of getting that completed for the board. So at some point in time, that will come back to you. You are one of the signatories to this document, and then we'll get it recorded.
Okay, do we need more time for this, like an extended period of time? Because we did make a decision on that other part of it's all been taken care of.
And this wasn't involved with the most recent modification decision that you had? No. So for this document, I think it's just something that needs to, we need to just keep track of. So it may be worthwhile to think about some type of a status timeframe. I don't know how you wanna structure your agenda, ask him to report it back to you or something.
We don't meet in August, so it'll have to be in September.
I would hope that I could accomplish anything we're talking about by September. At least have it to the point where we know what's going on, and we're in the process of getting signatures or something. I don't expect to come back in two months and say, "I haven't figured out that I haven't..."
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I mean, it's gonna take some time to review some files, and if Mass Housing is needed to sign this, it's gonna take some time.
I'm thinking, so sure, if it exists, I just had a thought sitting here with you, that South Shore Housing might have a copy. We might have given it to them when we did the last lottery. Because this happened, you know, before the second phase lottery, maybe they have it.
Yeah, and if you need at any point in time, if Tony wants to email me and have me go deeper into records and see what I've got, I can try to do that, too.
Sometimes it's easier just to get people to re-sign than to find the stuff.
Okay, we'll just put that on for September.
And then the other document had to do with the homeowners association trust document. So I spent some time with Mr. Zola, and we did confirm that that was actually completed. I do have a recorded copy, I don't know if the board does. So there was a condominium trust, and then there was a declaration of trust, which he confirmed he is using at the closing for all the homeowners. If you remember when this was, when this matter was modified and the condominium was eliminated, one of the pieces that needed to happen was for the current homeowners to sign off and get their approval. So we actually do have, I do, I did find in my records this morning when I went really deep into my file, I found the recorded copy that does have all those homeowner signatures at the time. I can give a copy to Roz, and I'm sure she can put it in your packets for the next time before I leave today. And so that, I think, is resolved on that agenda item. There is a homeowners association document that is being used, and that is up to date consistent with development. And then the last thing has to do with a letter. I had been asked by Mr. Pacheco when he was chairman to put a letter together with regards to what conditions might need to be completed before the development was kind of concluded and ready for cost certification review. And so I had sent a letter to the board in April around that, and we can go through those if you want. I think that's part of your packets tonight. Mr. Zola does have a copy of it, so maybe he can report out as to where things sit.
There's a whole list of, did you receive a copy of this?
Yeah, I'm prepared. Somewhere.
Well, I mean, if we need to, we can keep talking about it in September.
Well, can you, like...
You want me to lead? I didn't know, usually...
I can summarize where we're at, and then maybe he can respond.
We're not gonna meet till September. Some of these conditions could be met by the time we meet.
Some of them were always met, some of them were not issues. So I think we can cross...
I'm not sure which ones they are.
Yeah.
So do you wanna do this now, or do you want to have Mr. Zola just submit a letter to the board responding to this?
Well, is there anything there that can be completed between now and September?
Let me take a shot at this real fast. The first one, the first one we always had...
Well, wait, you're gonna have to direct what I'm asking out.
To the extent that the applicant may need to obtain easements for the operations of the project, we didn't, we never needed any.
That's condition 14.
So we always owned all the property, we never had to go to anybody else to get any portion of any easements, and that was really non-applicable. Condition 16 is, yeah, that has to do with, we're responsible for the roadways for two years, we agree. There was never, there was never a transfer, per se. I take that back. Tony would think that you guys have that, somewhere in there. Because that was back in day one, that was like day one, you know, we couldn't do anything till we had the discharge permit. I mean, he can dig through his files and find it, his, 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 we know are in archives. So they're not even in his building anymore.
So I know I have, I came across it this morning, whether I brought it with me tonight, I'm not sure, but I do have a copy of a, recorded copy of the groundwater disposal permit. What is, I can check, if you can tell me what the current developer is, I can confirm that it's in the right name. This has to do with whether or not it was transferred.
I believe that the state documents are in the name of the Dyton Woods Trust. It may, it may still come in the name of the Dyton Woods Condominium Trust, but it's in the name of the, it's not in the name of Dyton Homes LLC. Everything that's supposed to be in the names of the Dyton Woods Trust has always been in the name of the Dyton Woods Trust, if that makes any sense.
So I'm gonna take a look further at the copy of the document I have in my files, and I can supplement this letter on that, that note for the board.
Hey, Jim, they wanna make sure you get as-built plans ninety days after, before ninety days after the issuance of the occupancy. You think I can comply with that?
Was that as-built for the buildings or as-built for the...
Nah, for the lots.
Okay. I have a different take on that, I get a wide...
What number are you working on there? Condition 19?
Forty-three.
How is this joke going about forty? Forty-three is non-applicable.
I get, I get all the, board, I get all the as-builts upfront before I do the inspection.
Yeah, so fifty-one, yeah, okay.
That has to be done at the town meeting, and it has to meet all the buildings, I'm not the builder, the...
There's a process, yeah, we're agreeing with that. And I don't think that the profit numbers are applicable.
So the roads are currently private, right?
The roads, yeah, they're all by the trust.
He's responsible for the evidence going on there.
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
That's not applicable.
Condition seven of 2009.
That's all changed now.
Well, I don't owe you anything.
If, if, so this was, some of what I put in here was more as FYI for the developer, too. So if that does happen, it's kind of a reminder that, hey, when cost certification occurs, this is a, you know, unique condition that exists for this development, and here's what it would require.
Yeah, well, we got the more lots, when we got more lots, we came in, and you got, the fear was, oh, we're gonna get more lots and get rich. So we put in a clause that basically said, if we made over a certain amount of money, then we agreed to kick back a certain percentage of that money to the town, but I gave you my, that ain't happening. So it's really not applicable. And the corner rods, I don't wanna go to the wall with it, but I'm pretty sure they've been installed through Phase Two. I've talked to the engineer, he said he thought they were installed through Phase Two, and I had talked to a customer about a month ago who was in Phase Two, who had rods. So I'm pretty sure that we're...
Well, tip on it between now and September.
Yeah, yeah, I'll see if I can get a certification certificate for Phase Two, and I've also ordered him to commence Phase Three. And that's it. And we found the, we found the, 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 the document that Marguerite didn't think was recorded.
Yeah, I did actually find a recorded copy of it.
There really isn't a heck of a lot here. It's more so just that the discharge permit is really the only open item.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on that?
Sure.
I have some correspondence here from DEP when I was withholding permits because of the upgrade that needed to be done. And DEP references a groundwater discharge permit that's in Dyton Wood Trust's name. It's permit number SE-0-807, and it's dated August 30th, 2016. So I'd be happy to follow this to you, Marguerite.
Yeah, and if you have it, a copy of it, too? Would you have it in your records?
I think I only got it electronic format.
Okay, but it would at least let me look and check if it's been recorded, too. But it's supposed to come to all of these entities?
I'm not gonna go all that that one's been recorded, that's a refresher right there. But the original one, we know was recorded.
You can forward that to me.
Yeah, sure, okay.
I don't think the one I have is from 2016, I think the one I have in my file, because I was looking at paperwork from back in '08, '09, 2010.
Right, and this one, the reason this one's dated much later is because there was an upgrade to the system that needed to be done. So I think this is a crucial document, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, so the, the condition says that the copy needs to be provided to the board, and the application for transfer of ownership or transfer agreement filed with DEP needs to be provided to the board.
There wasn't, uh...
And then it needs to come to the selectmen and the town clerk.
What does...
And any of the annual financial reports.
Oh, yeah, that was the other, there were, I've been running, I've been running the association basically through my company. The people haven't, the trust was never, hasn't been operational until, like, three months ago. Basically, so there's no separate financials for the trust, because I've just been paying the bills. But they, they have their reserves and everything else, they're gonna be putting in play.
So again, I mean, this goes to just the paperwork on file with the town. So if you wanna take a look at that condition language, Jay?
Yeah.
Condition 19, and make sure that that documentation has been sent to the right parties. So there's a whole bunch of different pieces needed. It's the transfer piece, the actual permit itself and the new name, the transfer agreement or application, and the financial reports.
Backing up there one second, I don't think there's been a transfer, so I gotta provide the document, right?
If the original one was in Dyton Homes LLC, then there would have had to be something done to...
Nothing was ever in the name of Dyton Homes LLC. I mean, it was in the name of the, yeah, back, this was back in like 2004, 2006, is that what it was?
This is your two origins, right?
It was originally...
Yeah, because this condition is from 2004, so the town just needs to have the papers.
It might have been issued directly to the trust, because I can't remember it going into Dyton Woods, Dyton Homes Joint Venture LLC, which is really the owner. I don't recall that.
Well, I do remember there was a change there of some kind.
Oh, there was a change.
So...
No, there was a change in the permit, in the modification to the permit.
So what I can say is, let me look at what I have, let me look at what the billion inspector sends to me, I can send a supplemental letter on this particular condition and try to itemize out what needs to be given to the town. And you can check to see if it's ever been sent to the town, and if it hasn't, then you've gotta send it to these parties, all these different pieces, under this condition.
I could, would it be, would it be the last one, Ros? Maybe, well, would it be beneficial if the selectors own us and see if they have it? Is that just a wild goose chase?
I don't think they do, quite frankly, but...
Well, in the beginning, you know, in the beginning of the thing, it was pretty, you know, we were pretty operational with the attorneys were involved, and more so than, you know, fourteen years later as a project, in the beginning, it was like, you know...
Do you remember sending annual financial reports?
No, I just said to you, there are none.
There weren't any?
Because we, because the trust, the trust was never active. We just, you know, Dyton Homes LLC was just paying, the homeowners weren't paying anything.
Yeah, but this has to do with the financial security.
The security's in place.
I know, but was there an annual report filed on that?
Unless, unless my...
And what was done with that?
Unless my engineer filed it, I didn't file it.
Could be interest on it, anyway, wouldn't have the money to sit there.
It's my, the truth legal money's in my line of credit, I set it aside with the bank.
There should be something sent to the town that confirms that that security's there and what's been happening to it in the last fourteen years.
Is what legal?
To have it do on line of credit, isn't that money supposed to be, that's a trust.
Well, when it was in my, when I owned, when I was owning and operating, when I was operating, operating the whole thing and paying all the bills, I am in the process of, or I've been a little bit delinquent, I'm supposed to turn the money over to them, so that'll be taken care of within a week or so. I'll get the forty-five thousand over to the trust.
Because it has to be there.
Well, yeah, I agree, I agree with you.
So something needs to be sent to the town showing that that money is there, and who it's with, and who's holding it, and in what way.
That'll be if it's the town.
Because if the town ever needs to access it, they need to have information about.
How to do it?
About it.
That's it.
The town's gonna, the town has a right to access that money.
Well, that's what the whole financial security provision is around, that it's there to support if the, if the...
Right, right, I understand the date, I've always pictured it or presented, presented it, the date that the homeowners, that the forty-five grand had to be set aside, then they have, as an additional requirement, they need to set aside seventy-five hundred bucks a year for operational...
But shouldn't that being, being done with these people that bought these houses, they should be paying into some kind of, uh...
Well, now they are, that's what I've been trying to say. They weren't paying, they, no one, no one was paying in.
All right, but when did they start?
Two months ago.
All right, so two months, there's two months, how many, how many buildings are there? How many houses, how many people are paying?
Those fifties?
That adds up, something happens to you, there's no, nothing in the trust, that money needs to be put in there.
Well, my bank, my, it's, my bank knows where the money's supposed to go. It was set up correctly, it was set up, it was set up to protect the association.
So what I'll do is, I'll grab, I'll...
That's how we set it up, why we set it up that way.
I'll find the reference to what it is that they're looking, what type of information they're looking for, I'll go back and I'll reread the financial security provision that related to this wastewater system, so that you can, I mean, if it hasn't been provided, it should be provided, and we need to have, and it needs to go to the right parties. And I'll try to supplement this letter with a little bit more detail, and maybe even give you copies of documents since they're all old.
Whatever you find, whatever you find, this will just, we'll all try to circulate, we'll be fine. And that way, we'll save each other time.
Does that work, Mr. Chairman?
It'll be, it'll be on in September, right? Do you need a motion made on that, or anything?
I know.
It could just be a motion to continue and keep the agenda items for the First Amendment to the regulatory agreement and then conditions to be completed.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that case number 03-0318, Dyton Woods Circle, be continued to September.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know that I was talking to the past chairman, I don't know if it got into the board at the last meeting, to discuss the completion of the roadways and the release of funds, if you all, well, I don't think many of you were really here back then.
I have a note on it, uh...
So back, and I'm gonna make a guesses to the timeframe, 2015 or so, 2016, 2015, we came in and we completed the binder on the whole roadway. And at that point in time, the board said, whoop, wait a minute, before we release your money, we wanna, we wanna go ahead and have a, have the engineer reevaluate the board.
Before you go much further, I've got a thing written down here, and it is, like, that we no talk about a public way, that needs to go before the planning board, all right?
Yes.
As far as that going.
We're not talking about that.
Well, I thought that's what you were talking about, the roadways.
Well, I gotta finish, I have, you're holding my money, you're, you control my money, not the planning board.
That's the way the town has it written right now. But says right there, you need to apply something, I'm not sure what you apply for, is it, apply for the money?
No, no, when I wanna get the streets accepted, I'm assuming what it's saying is I'm gonna make an application through the planning board to have the streets accepted. That'll be next year. But right now, I wanna, I wanna get the money that you're holding released as I do work, so that I can do the work. Because otherwise, it creates a problem for me, because when we did that release back then, it came up in conversation that all the money would be held until all the roads and everything was completed.
Bring me up to speed, I don't know how much money's there.
Hundred and seventy thousand bucks.
Hundred and seventy thousand dollars is being held?
Plus or minus, yeah.
For the completion of the roads?
Correct.
And how much are you asking for?
Nothing. I'm asking you to release it when I do the work. Right now, the board put in, put in place a, a law that applies to Dyton Woods, that you won't release any money until the roads are 100% complete. And I'm saying, I think that's unfair, and then I think that...
Is that a condition, Marguerite?
The last time that the developer came for a release of funds, at that point in time, the remaining balance seemed to be equal to the contingency that existed in your condition. Remember, your conditions around performance guarantees require approximately a 10% contingency to be held until a year after final buildout. And so the last time, which was a couple of years ago, that the developer came to release funds, I made a note to the board that indicated that I believed this was, the balance now matched that 10% contingency.
Which was a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And so that, I suggested that, it was my recommendation that that means no further funds be released until that period of time has passed. It's up to the developer, if he wants to request this to the board, the board can certainly consider it, however, I don't see my recommendation changing.
I misunderstood entirely what you were saying.
Is it all passed now? Is there any money left that, that...
No, because I don't think you're at final buildout.
Is there a reason to be holding it, or should we release part of it?
No, I don't want any of it.
Then what the hell are you doing?
I'm trying, what I, what I wanna do is, I wanna know that when I put in forty thousand dollars worth of sidewalks, and I come in here and say, "I did forty thousand dollars worth of work for the sidewalks that are itemized on the list that I paid the engineer, that I paid, that you had me pay by an associates to create," that you're gonna release the forty thousand dollars.
Okay, bring the bill, we'll go out and take a look, and then give you the money.
But I don't think that's what Marguerite was saying.
I mean, again, that, I, I don't see my recommendation changing based on the language of your condition. So unless you wanna modify that condition, my recommendation would be that he has met, he has received the release of funds, and now whatever's left in that balance matches the 10% contingency.
And it needs to stay there, is that what you're saying?
Until a year after final buildout, which would be the point in time that per the condition, he has the right to receive those funds back.
Wait a minute, so, so you've had roads, streets accepted this year, you helped 10% of the total cost of their road after, after the streets have been accepted by the town?
Hold on, the only board of appeals hasn't had anything to do with any roads being accepted.
But you, but you control the money for all these projects.
That's right, it's a condition.
It's the same situation, bro.
I understand it's probably the same situation, but you made a statement that we released the money, we did not.
I didn't say you did anything.
You said the town accepted roads, these other roads were, had nothing to do with the zoning board, I don't know how they worded their projects.
No, no, I believe one of the streets was, did Bob, Jim approached me in the town hall and said, hey...
I go to the meetings, we didn't accept anybody.
To answer your question, we have not released any 40B, recent 40Bs that were in construction and accepted the roads, none of that's happened.
What's gonna happen?
There has been discussion, but it's not happened.
It hasn't happened yet, and there's money being held.
Right, but you, but the numbers, the number that you were talking, when we were talking?
Yes.
There was a number that you, that I believe got tossed around, it was like in the twenty, thirty thousand dollar range, that was being held, and then a comment was made, well, some of that's the complete work that's not completed. So my question was, I guess is, if, unless that, that total cost of that road was three hundred thousand dollars, then I don't think that we're talking apples to apples how Marguerite's saying that we should, that we're gonna be treated. Because if that were the case, then they did a pretty good job building their road for three hundred thousand dollars, because you're only holding thirty. Yes, it might have cost us 1.7 million dollars to build our road, and Marguerite's, I don't know that to be factual or not, but Marguerite's estimating that 10% of that's a hundred and seventy, and that should be held basically for a year and a half after the road's done.
But what you need to do, would probably apply to us, and we'd have to make a decision as to whether this is a major change or a minor change, and work, work on that, basically, you can't just go make a decision here tonight on this.
Well, I...
This is a condition, am I right on this, Marguerite? This is a change in the condition.
Yeah, I mean, there's two, two ways that it can be done. One is that I can tell you that my recommendation comes from the language in the comprehensive permit, so you could potentially consider a modification. Or you could have him come before you and just ask for a release of further funds, and decide if you're willing to give that release despite what...
Proportionately?
Potentially, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what you're asking, right now, you're, you're doing this based on a hypothetical request.
No, well, it's not hypothet, it's not hypothetical, I mean, I, I built roads, I built several roads over the years, and I've never heard of this before, where, where that kinda money is being held. I mean, basically, most towns will, including this one, I believe you were releasing the, 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 um...
Let's slow down a second, this project was started in 2004, all right, so since 2004, it's fourteen years.
Yeah.
The roads had a lot of use over in the fourteen years and stuff, and the, the condition was put in there to protect the town, so at the final build, I don't have a problem with you as you go through with this, coming to us and showing us that you've done the problem, and you want release of the money as it gets down to the end, but for you to come here tonight and ask us to release a hundred and seventy-five thousand was what you're saying.
I didn't ask you to release anything, I didn't ask you, you keep saying that.
He's asking us to release money after you did work.
I'm asking you to tell me that you will release money as I do work.
I'm gonna tell you, you need a modification to the condition.
If that's what I, if that's what I need, if that's what I need, I have absolutely, that's great.
Clearly states that we need to hold that money, so, well, Marguerite's stated to you, is you need a modification, unless this board's willing to, and this board's not willing to, so you need a modification to the condition.
I wouldn't expect it to. And I was unaware that.
I think it all has to be posted. It's a condition that we have to make a determination whether it's a major change or minor change.
Well, can we try to accomplish that maybe together at the September meeting?
Yes, the authority. We don't have the authority to give the roads. I understand, but you're asking us to give, you're asking us to release money, which has still got to do with the planning board.
No, I'm gonna back up on that. I've been here for fourteen years. I've never been to the planning board. Ever. I come here to get my money released to the roads.
The roads. They're the ones that ultimately are gonna say it's okay. They go out and look. Then we get by the planning board and then we consider.
But the release goes through your board.
Here, but you need to still deliver that money. The release of the money will still come with us. To get the road accepted goes through the planning board.
Correct. That's after the fact though. That's after we've done building. Great, I think that's after we build the roads and they're all complete. We're then gonna pick them up and we're gonna say, okay, we've done our job here. Go upstairs to the planning board and they're gonna present it to the town meeting. I agree.
Hey, write it off for September. And we'll hear it then and we can make a decision that night if it's a major change or a minor change. And whichever way it goes, doesn't seem to be a major change to me.
Right.
And maybe we can maybe make a modification where so much is released, there's so much is done, so we still.
Well, you have a sheet. So it have, just real quicks, I know it's taking time, hopefully. Vine Associates did a line item cost analysis.
Right, that's our engineer.
So you have that, that's two years old. So we know what everything's supposed to cost. So as we just use, we use that as the basis for the request and the release of funds.
My suggestion is that if you're looking for a modification to the decision, that you file a modification request and that you do it through the rules that the board has for a modification request. So there's things you'll need to identify.
Well, there's a form I gotta do, I gotta pay seven hundred and fifty bucks.
You're gonna have to identify what language you're looking to modify, how you want to change and proposed language and all that stuff so the board can actually see what it is you're looking to do. And if you can get that done and enough, take care of filing that in August, that way it will be, they'll have some chance to send it to me to look at and we can actually have a very productive conversation at the September meeting. That would be my suggestion.
And that's the only condition you really want to modify? Everything else seems to be fine, correct?
Correct, yeah. I'm just looking, what I want to have happen here is as I do the work, as I get towards completion, right? I wanna get paid for doing it because otherwise, it's a pretty big fight. It generally probably costs me a year, costs them a year anyway. I'd have to wait to sell all the houses to collect the money to do the work. I'd rather use your money or my money that you're holding to do the work. And as the work's done, at least you know you're getting it. It's right in front of you, you know, it's right there for you. We'll do that, we'll apply.
Okay, see you in September.
Thank you.
What is your September meeting date?
I don't know.
What's the calendar?
Third Wednesday. I don't have that in front of me.
Maybe the nineteenth. Third Wednesday. Nineteenth.
And it's at seven o'clock that you'll be meeting?
We're already at the fall. Maybe we'll have a frost. We'll have a frost that night. Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of number two. Okay, number three. Case number oh five one eight, twenty-six seventy-three Park Avenue. Any people here? I don't have it here. You do have to be.
We emailed it to Nicole.
Nicole?
Yeah.
Do you have it?
So this, yes, this is a notice that went out.
Let me get rid of what I got here. I'm confused, I don't know why. I need that.
I love you, Bob.
Doesn't take once.
We do have the invoice from the Gazette. It has been paid, so you're good to go. Normally, the clerk reads this. This is a notice that went out into the Abouters, to the Gazette.
I'm gonna read that.
Sure.
I'm just saying it's a difference, that could be each thing.
I just wanted you to read that.
Oh, no, I know, I'm just kind of looking at the picture, that reminded me of the photocopy thing. We should make sure that this is not from the condition.
Well, she said it was.
Okay.
This is something she added in. All I was looking for was the numbers on these, we can look it up ourselves, but she went ahead and put those in there for us. That is up to date as far as I know. Yeah. Do you want me to read the notice from the paper?
Yep, this is a notice that appeared in the Tottendale Gazette. Notice hereby given that the Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven P M. at the Dyton Town Hall, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Massachusetts, on the application of Andrew Dyer for a property located at six seventy-three, sorry, twenty-six seventy-three Park Avenue and shown on Assessor's Map Lot twenty-five, map twenty-five lot number two hundred eleven, for a special permit to raise a non-conforming structure and reconstruct a new single-family home with a larger volume or area than the original structure. Decision pursuant to zoning bylaws, section twenty-four sixty, catastrophe or demolition, and a variance to allow the reconstruction of a single-family home in the open recreation and conservation district. Decision pursuant to zoning bylaws, section two-two-three-zero, regulation schedule appendix A, case number five eighteen, and it's signed by Nicole, the office manager, sent to the Assessors, Building Inspector, City Commission, Fire Department, Highway Department, and Gangway and the Water Department.
Okay, I have a note here on this. Robyn, you know anything about it? It says, this fifteen hundred dollars filing fee request?
Oh.
For maps?
No, but I'm, sorry, I don't.
All right, you want to present the case?
Yes. Thank you.
Board members.
You gotta click the board members.
All right, I'll click the board members. Tim Ryanes, Jason Quinn, and Greg Logan.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ed Brennan. I'm an attorney with an office at One Church Green in Taunton, representing the petitioner on Mr. Dyer. The proposal is, you're probably all familiar with the site, it's down on the river. There's an existing single-family home on the site now. Mr. Dyer proposes to raise that structure and to build a new home on the site. The proposal will comply with all of your rules and regulations on setbacks and building height, front yard, front side and rear and building height, and it will comply with lot coverage. The special permit is required under the section of your bylaw entitled catastrophe and demolition, which allows for the demolition, in the event of a demolition or the raising of a house on a non-conforming lot, because the lot does not comply with your current zoning, it's pre-existing non-conforming. Your bylaw provides that a special permit may issue that would allow the construction of a new home on that lot. We're not asking for any variances for many dimensional sizes because with the area being pre-existing and the structure that we propose to build will comply in all regards to your zoning bylaw. So there are two things required. The first is the special permit to allow the raising, demolition of a building and construction of a new one. And the second one is a special permit for putting a single-family home in the open recreation and conservation district. So those are the two items of relief that we're asking the board to grant us. Because it complies with zoning, there's not a whole lot that I have to talk about as far as setbacks, et cetera, because that isn't the issue. There is already a single-family home on the lot, so to demo the existing one and to build a new one that conforms to zoning, certainly, I think, would be within the discretion of the board to grant this special permit to allow that. There's already a house there, it'd just be a newer house. And it will be elevated to conform with being built on the edge of the river. So, you know, those are the two items of relief that we're requesting. We'd ask that the board consider it, the vote well within the discretion of this board, and ask that you would grant both of those requested reliefs.
I have a question. Is, do you have a, it's nineteen thousand, one thousand nine hundred fifty-five square feet.
That's the footprint.
That is the footprint that's there.
That's the proposed footprint.
What is it now?
Do you have the plan? This is the footprint out there, it doesn't have dimensions on it, it's smaller.
Doesn't give it all I have.
But it doesn't, the existing structure doesn't comply with side yard. So, and the shed doesn't. The shed's gonna go and the new building will be moved over to increase that ten feet to the.
So you're gonna dispose of the shed altogether?
That's correct.
Mr. Cam, seventeen hundred ninety-eight square feet.
Sounds like twenty square feet difference.
I was pointing to the tax documents.
And we'll cure that, and we'll cure that non-conformity on the side yard as well.
Does it have any, like, there is an existing driveway there, but it does, how far from existing, is this ninety feet? Is that what that's?
The frontage is ninety feet on the lot.
Ninety feet of frontage, how far is the setback from the middle of the road, you know, thirty-five?
It's thirty-five plus twenty. As you measure to the center line of the public way, so we're fifty-five and change.
All right, is there any bodies here? Would you like to be heard?
No, I just came because I was invited.
Oh.
That's a first, huh?
Did you sign in?
No.
Well, you should have signed in. Do you have?
You can't get ice cream and cake unless you sign in.
Is there ice cream and cake?
No, I don't like it. They figured I'd eaten enough.
My client was at Conservation this past week also, and got a positive order of conditions.
This is a pre-existing wall.
Yeah, it's an upgrade, it's an improvement.
So Concom has issued an order of conditions for the site.
Was it a vote, was it last Wednesday night, Concom?
Last night, we didn't have a D E P number yet. D E P had our check, but they couldn't, they lost it. We had the topic, we wouldn't issue it. We're waiting for that number to be issued.
I have another question for you, sir. It says, existing seawall to be replaced and boat ramp removed at a later date. How do you propose to do that?
We still have room to get around the house. We did propose to do the seawall, but then it require.
Because it is in pretty tough shape.
We're gonna take, we're taking the boat ramp out anyways, because if we can't get to it, we can't do anything with it anyways.
But you can't.
We're gonna look at the wall a little bit better, see if we can't tie it back now with what's there and to stay. So it's either that or we have to go to ninety-one eighty.
There's a special permit for that anyway, isn't there?
There's a special permit goes through the state.
That's a waterways.
Yeah, you have the ninety-one, right?
D E P, that waterways division takes care of that.
And you're not opposed to this?
No, I'm not opposed. Hundred percent for it.
Yeah, a hundred percent for it.
And we can redo your seawall.
And what is your name?
Leah Pearl.
Where are, I'm looking for the proposed new septic areas, leaching field, things like that, the tank itself. I see the old.
Correct. The new has not yet been designed. It was, it's an expense that Mr. Dyer will go forward with the Board of Health, we clear Concom in this board.
Okay.
So we haven't incurred that expense yet.
Okay.
But we obviously need Board of Health approval on the redesign.
It'll all depend on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just kind of one step at a time so we don't.
Yeah. Now, I have a couple of questions. You said something about catastrophic demolition and then you said raise. Are you utilizing any of the existing elements?
When I say raise, R A Z.
I got you.
I should have said.
Oh, that was confusing. I started spelling it like that and I was like.
Understood now, okay.
I probably did say it's gonna be raised up as well.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
You're gonna raise it and we're gonna raise it.
Yeah, gonna raise it and kind of knock it down. Ah, okay. But so you, septic system, that's all, something you're aware of, you're gonna do.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, well, how high is this property compared to the road? Because you gotta be, the septic system would be high in the front.
Yeah, there's a.
They've done other ones down there. Yeah, there's few.
You did, you did a new one on, right down the street at twenty-six twenty for Mike and Denise Wheeler, it was a similar project. And I think they have the same issue.
Just making for the swell, make sure all that, that'd be different. That'd be two.
I'm assuming two stories.
Your house is gonna go up.
Yes.
Two stories?
Yes, yes.
Do we have to condition that, that it has built, we put in the condition?
Has built for.
That, this particular structure?
No, sir, my building code covers that.
How many bedrooms is your proposal? Three.
You guys are Butters? You two?
No, this is the house for us.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I was just, sure, okay.
What do you?
I have no other questions.
Anybody else?
Chairman, I do not also this time.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, can I ask a quick question?
I have one too, actually, just for, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just for administrative purposes, because we have a special permit and a variance, it's technically two votes, correct?
Two votes.
But it can be the same people?
Yeah, it can be the same.
Okay.
Good question.
So my question is with regards to the variance, because you prohibit use variances in your bylaw.
What?
I'm actually not sure, is this home, is it a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Yes, it's a pre-existing law.
Because the.
And the house is still there.
That district, I believe, was probably adopted fairly recently and the house was already there. So the use and the lot size are both pre-existing non-conforming.
You're not changing that pre-existing non-conforming use?
Correct.
No, all they're doing is adding about two hundred square feet more.
So I'm not sure why a use variance would even be needed.
I don't either.
And it's not able to be provided under the zoning bylaws in Dyton? They actually have a provision that specifically prohibits it, but I just.
Well, there's an open space.
She's coming from the petitioner, so I guess I'm wondering why the petitioner believes it.
Well, I think I asked for that because of the, simply because a single family in that particular, what's it called, the open recreation and conservation district on your use chart had a note.
Right, this is pre-existing.
It's pre-existing.
We wouldn't allow it if this, that's why when you first applied, there was a thing about abandonment on the application across the street. And that was, that's never been abandoned.
I think the only way a variance would be required is if there was an abandonment of the use, pre-existing non-conforming use. And as Attorney Mitchell pointed out, we don't do use variances, so I just don't think the variance is applicable here as long as construction is gonna happen right away.
He's meeting all of his dimensions, so there is no variance for side yard or any other thing on it. More than the other.
It's more, yeah, special permit than any.
It's a special permit to demolish and rebuild.
Right.
So in light of that, the board can either take a vote on the variance application or you could just withdraw the application.
I'd rather withdraw it than have a no vote.
So what are you gonna do?
I mean, yeah, I think that it would be.
Respectfully request that we withdraw the request for the variance, the use variance.
Use variance.
Right.
Do we have to vote on that?
Do we have to vote on that one?
You do.
Usually, just something in writing and then you could vote to accept the withdrawal. Typically, just even a sheet of paper and you can make note of.
Roslyn, you want to do that?
I'm sorry, what?
He needs to write a withdrawal.
Do you want to write? I got it.
Do a high-tech.
Yeah.
High-tech a write.
Yes. Just text it, it's fine.
The demolition.
Uh, demolition, yep. There is a timeline in that too, isn't there?
No, if you, if you accept the withdrawal, then it hasn't been voted on, the timeline of, limit would apply if you had denied it.
No, no, I meant about the special, the, the special permit to rebuild and stuff. There's a time.
I think it's 12 months in your bylaw.
I thought I read that one year first.
You just want to rewrite on that Gazette and line up. You have the Gazette paperwork? No. You don't? No, but it was, it was submitted email across the street. You have it though, can I see it? This is what was in the paper. What he read doesn't...
No, it's, no, it's still here, left. Still left on the back, okay.
Okay, so you...
Yeah.
What are you looking at, huh?
That's what I was questioning. But it's all right, it's there. Rosalind, put that with the file?
Yeah, please.
You just can make your own to accept it.
We gotta pull out.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, accept the request of Attorney Brennan for his withdrawal request, um, to the board.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the, uh, special permit to raise, is it raise? To raise a, a non-conforming structure and reconstruct a single-family home with a larger volume on the area than the original structure. We're meeting all the side setbacks, except for the existing front, obviously.
I'll make the motion to approve the special permit.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any discussion? The footprint of the house is gonna stay to this exact... Yeah, it has to meet the, the plan that was submitted. Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay, next thing we have to do here tonight is accept the Rosalind's... Good night. Discuss the new application of special permit and variances. Has anybody had a chance to look at this online?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. Yeah, anybody have any quick questions? Are you good with it?
I think it's excellent.
Yep, I'm good.
Me too. And there's another thing I, uh, she's asking for us to authorize to put this online. Does anybody have any problem with that?
No.
Also, do you need a motion for that? The application to go online?
I would, no.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No, why? Well, it's, 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 it's okay. Everything else is going online and...
We do have to vote to accept it, though.
Right, well, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, accept the, um, new application for special permit and variance applications, the edited version.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on here. Okay, do we want to discuss whether we want to meet in August or not? I don't have anything on the agenda, so as far as I'm concerned, there's no reason for us to move.
I don't think so.
Okay, I took care of that. All right, now I have a, I wanna go back to this, uh, number three here, uh, about the, uh, was it number three? No, I'm sorry, no. Was the first one, the, uh, review and discuss an active zoning members, they're asking the zoning, uh, zoning member involved, a member from every board on the...
Cannabis.
Cannabis.
Cannabis, the PAC committee.
Don't assert, Chris.
Anyway. Now, since I spoke to you about it, Tim, this has become a mute thing where there's not much going on, that they've already completed with their tasks were set out to do to get, to get it to where it is now.
Correct, to go to town meeting and to, uh...
They're, they're, they aren't meeting on this anymore.
So, nah, no, but they still like to keep the, uh...
Right, they do.
Commission.
I just wanted you to let you know that. Are you so willing to accept that?
Yes, I would be, Mr. Chairman. And that would be, uh, not be as an associate member anymore, but as a voting member. I represented the D board as an, as an associate member. Former chairman Pacheco, uh, was the voting member of the board.
He's not, he's not there anymore?
No, I was an associate member. He was the voting member.
I see.
So now I will be the voting member, so I don't know if we need to send...
I didn't know you were already there.
Associate.
Well, I probably did, but didn't realize it when I saw you. Now, the other one is this, uh, uh, joint member of the 40B committee. Is there anybody interested in being that? I don't know when they meet. They've written down here, "Tim, I don't know if you're interested in it or not. You went on that zoning board, uh, the 40B project."
Uh, yes, I did. Um, I would like to find out exactly what nights, um, they meet before I accept. Um, do they need to know?
No.
Ask them.
No, just let, let me know, and you, you just accept it and just notify Nicole that you're willing to do it. Is there anybody else who's interested?
I would just have to know, uh, what the meeting night would be.
I know you, you had gone to the seminar on it, and you, I, I've been to several seminars, so you're the person I thought of, because you've had that experience. I don't know what, what it's gonna involve. It was something that Tom Pius had started earlier on, on, when we were trying to reach a, uh, a way of developing a, a plan to go towards, and we did develop the plan, but then the housing, like, market just tanked, and we could never reach and fulfill our obligations. I don't know if they're even meeting now, but it was something they wanted to discuss tonight. She can get back to me in September.
Yeah, I'll accept, uh, provisionally, just, uh, depending on what tonight, uh, the meeting is, the meetings are, that's all.
Okay.
Does that work for the committee?
Yeah.
That's, thank you, Tim.
And for some reason, Tim, Mr. Ryan's can't do it, I can, I can step in.
Okay, because they usually meet in the evening, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be a provision, honestly.
All right, now I need to approve the June 20th minute, minutes?
I think I have those. Hold on one more.
I've read them all, myself. It was quite detailed. I'm all settled.
Yep.
I read them online.
Yep, I'm good too.
Yeah, I read those online also, Mr. Chairman.
Do I make a motion? Will you approve the minutes from June 20th, 2018?
A little second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, I've read them already.
But you need to sign them.
Yeah.
So whether you sign on here, I mean, down here, or up here, it's different, but you can make the sign. Once the board. So I'm sorry, who made that motion, Greg?
Yeah.
And second was?
Me, Jason Quinn.
Thank you.
Me.
Yeah.
Me, 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 me.
Just read on me.
Yeah, just read on me.
This back?
Yes.
He's a muppet, isn't he?
It's with this here.
Me, me.
Oh, beaker, beaker.
Okay, next is the payroll and paid bills, Mr. Chairman. We have still old business, case 04-18, Horton Street. Oh, yeah, we gotta sign that. Yeah. Thank you, buddy.
What was that? I signed it. Was that her?
No, you didn't, I don't, yeah, you were there. You came in, no, that was something else you signed.
Okay, yeah.
That was a regular...
That day I saw you over there.
Yeah, that was, uh, uh, something different. I'm not sure, I can't remember. This was Horton Street where they had a pre-existing, uh, two, two, two houses on the same lot.
I remember which one it was.
They were, had more than enough acreage, but there was a, uh...
Two houses.
Two houses and...
Two separate properties, I think.
They were split two separate properties. They're gonna have their own septic systems. That all comes after them.
Gotcha.
It has to go through them to get it approved. You have it here?
Yes. Sorry, I'm just trying to...
Who were the voting members in that?
That would be...
I think I was one of them.
Bob, Zach, and Jason. There's two copies there. We just need to sign this off.
I don't know, remember last week? I remember six months ago.
Well, there was a, I had a question on the thing, because they didn't give me the, the number to, to look it up in, uh, about the square foot or two. Up, 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 man, because it was more than enough. So what do you think of the meeting?
Oh, you're good, uh?
Sorry?
What did you think of the meeting?
I think that it's much nicer, I, it's really hard to hear, like, when you watch them online, because there's no microphones here. You can't hear when the board is selecting.
Thank you.
Uh, I think last, the last meeting that I went to was, uh, uh, conservation, and they were talking, and they were really quiet, and I was like, what, wait, it's, it's, it's nice to show up, listen.
Well, it's nice that someone comes out to just feel they were invited.
People only come out to complain.
Well, yes.
Most of the time, sometimes.
Get active in town. Get out and vote, help us.
It was funny you say that, not necessarily, because there's a young lady who contacted me via the internet that, um, wants, she's in college, and she needs to do, um, some follow-up on one of her classes she takes, so she has to go to, like, a town meeting or just a regular standard committee meeting, so she's reached out to me, and she's gonna be attending our community preservation meeting tomorrow night.
Really?
For her college courses.
That's awesome.
You should, people should come and see.
Is there anything to see?
I gave it to Zach, so you just, um, let the board know what the payroll was and the bills, and they're here if they wanna review them.
Okay. Do I have to go over each individual payroll or is...
Just to the net, just to the total, right?
Yeah, just the total, but if anyone wants to see what you spent for the month and where the money went, the documentation's behind it.
I've seen all this, because I've been signing them. But the, uh, payroll, this is just for the month?
Honestly, I'm not sure how long, because did you guys meet?
Yeah, we met last month.
Oh, okay, then it's just for the month.
Figured out.
Since 26-18, but this is for gang gay. Well, the total amount was 3,347,14. That's the payroll and the bills were one, excuse me, 1,152. Motion to accept, someone?
I'll make the motion that we accept the payroll and bills paid for the previous month.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, didn't hurt a bit. All right, we need a motion to adjourn. Any, anybody got anything else they wanna add or any?
Is there public input or anything?
No public input.
No one?
She has it up there for you. I don't know if you've got...
Public input, okay. Cortland maybe, and this is a, uh, Cortland Road. They're not, you're not from Cortland Road. Overdue on taxes, wants to split a lot, pay it up, that they were, they were gonna come to us. She had mentioned it to me, that they might come in and wanna know. We could hear it, that before they go and they spend the money on a... Is it something we could hear?
Okay.
And we usually do that with people. Not only are we can hear, we can't hear, but they obviously didn't show up.
Okay.
So that's it.
Are we, just to, before we adjourn, are we actively looking for another Z B A member, just so I wouldn't...
I would think so. We're only, uh, we're one short right now.
Yeah, we are.
And, uh... You have to apply through, who they apply to.
Selecting. They have to write, they have to write a letter to the selecting.
I just, I'm bored of selecting.
Ask the word around.
Do we need to send some type of notification from this board to the B O S stating that we do need a member, even though they know that, uh...
One of the members.
It's a former member, so...
Okay, you could do that. Put it in the notes, and Nicole will take care of that.
Okay.
Any interest?
I don't know. I had to rush through my farm chores to get here.
That's not, that's not a no, though. She said, I don't know, so...
Are you on another board?
No.
You said farm.
My farm, where I live.